Hello and welcome to an extended London South East Q and A session with Greatland Gold Managing Director Sean Day. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Donald Leggett, Head of Investor Relations at London South East, and I'm here today to put your questions to Sean. Sean spoke to a room full of Greatland Gold investors yesterday, and we're here to try and cover the same ground today. Thanks for all your many inquired questions, and I'll ask as many as we have time for. And I'd like to start with a perhaps a simple question, but an intriguing one nonetheless. It's about the Patterson region. I was having lunch with the CEO of Orisur Mining, Brad George, the other day, just to name drop, and he mentioned how unrelentingly hot that Patterson was. Tell us, what's it like exploring for gold or constructing a gold mine in those conditions? And how do the seasons differ up there?
Hi, Donald, and thanks for having me on the programme again. Look, the Patterson is regional, even by Australian or West Australian standards, it is a reasonably remote area. It's north west, it's north of Western Australia. So you typically have the summer associated with rainfall events, to the extent it does rain, it's not a huge amount of rainfall. So really what we end up doing is actually typically suspending drilling through those really kind of peak summer, December through February. You can still do it at Havron because you're supported by a full camp there. Yeah, people can go back and eat well, lots of ability to rehydrate and everything. But in terms of the more temporary exploration camps, just from a health and safety point of view, we now try to run an eight to nine month drilling programme, just to manage the conditions for our team.
And how long is it actually there?
Oh, look, it can vary, but I think Marble Bar, which is kind of on the way there, is where they've got record weather and records for 100 years, is, I think, one of the hottest parts, or it is, I think, the hottest part of Australia. So it regularly can be in excess of 40 for multiple days in a row. Or notwithstanding, I've been in London on a 40 degree day, but that can be a bit more regular up there in the Patterson. So it's a really dry part of Australia. There's no pastoral leases up there, which perhaps tells you what a dry part of the country it is, because most of Australia, a lot of Australia has rangelands with pastoral leases. Those pastoral leases were given up a long time ago, just because it's not a great environment year round.
Which takes us to tell you-
Beautiful part of the world, but dry.
Oh, no, I've seen the pictures. It is really beautiful, isn't it? And which takes us to Telfer itself. It's a mining town created by Newcrest. So did anything exist before the, you know, the mining complex came along? And what does the success of Havron mean for the inhabitants of Telfer?
Well, Telfer was a town, but it's not anymore. So although once upon a time, there was a supermarket, school, post office, et cetera there, I'm going to say in about 1985 or something, they, or maybe a bit later than that, maybe it was 95, they switched from a town to a fly-in, fly-out site. So effectively, there are no families, to my knowledge, left in Telfer. In fact, I'm almost certain there's not. They're now all back and that workforce just kind of flies in for a one or two week shift and then flies home. So I think that's just been the evolution of mining in Australia, where it's really gone from Telfer, where there was nothing, a town created around a mine. But what you've seen is that's no longer the case. It really has transformed into a fly-in, fly-out, where people and their families still live in, or where they want to live, but let's just say in Perth, where they get access to better education, health, and other community services and support. And then the person in the family who's working at Telfer will fly out for that defined journey and then come home for off-shift.
Well, that was a random question, but that was not a random answer. Absolutely fascinating. Thank you so much. Who would have thought? Okay, so interesting. It's like the oil rigs here, where you're flying, you know, it's two weeks in and two weeks off. You fly in and fly out. Absolutely fascinating.
The old supermarket there is now the kind of the terminal where you get on the plane. So you see the history of the old town there, but it's now what we call a FIFO, fly-in, fly-out work site, which most mines are in Australia now.
Okay. Now, I thought your mind would be turning to the GM resolution, and we've got three questions talking about that resolution. And I put those, they're a little bit analytical, but I put those at the top, because I thought you'd want to deal with those quite smartly. John Hume wants to vote, basically wants to know how to vote, and he thinks he's going to vote by getting in touch with you. Is that the right way for him to vote? He's got a million and a half shares, he says, and he wants to vote them. In the favour of your resolutions?
Look, London's a little bit different to Australia, where you can vote direct. A lot of people hold their stock through brokers or nominees. You need to contact that nominee to vote. By all means, you can try to contact info@greatland and we'll seek to assist. But really, all we will principally be doing is referring you to who, the nominee that holds your stock, and they'll have their own rules for how they do that. I think what's very different in London compared to Australia, where Australia, you directly send out voting forms to every shareholder direct. Here, you send them to those nominees. They are not necessarily required to send them on to the underlying shareholders, and my understanding is they typically only do it on request, which is a bit different to Australia, but that's your London system.
It's a bit disconcerting, because no one gets in touch with you. I contacted Hargreaves Lansdown directly. I voted my shares directly on their platform, and I went to the corporate action instructions dropdown. So it was quite hard to find, but then quite easy, once I'd done it. I contacted them, told them what I wanted, you know, what was happening, the GM resolution, and that I wanted to vote a certain way. And the email back said, done, you've voted. So I would advise get in touch with your platform and then they'll take it from there.
Yeah, and we're really keen to be fully, you know, to get that funding squared away. So people should vote, you know, what do they say? Vote, vote early and vote often. So yeah, we'd love the support for those resolutions.
Fantastic. Mike Liverage asks, and it's quite a long and complex question, so let's quickly rock through it. His question concerns resolutions three to five at the general meeting, and his concern is further dilution. So he wants to know what specific circumstances would invoke those resolutions? Purchase of a near-term or actual revenue generating asset, so purchasing an asset, financing a takeover of a smaller producer perhaps. He's not keen on more dilution. He thinks you've got enough licenses, and he'd only accept an investment opportunity utilizing three to five that added quickly to our cash flow. And his question is, do you agree?
Well firstly, I think the resolutions we're focused on are one and two, you know, to be, to get the funding complete. Three, four and five are effectively a replica of last year's AGM, and will be again replicated at our 22 AGM. I think best practice is to refresh them every time you go to shareholders. We've just raised equity, we've told the market, we feel we're well-funded. We have absolutely no intent to go out and, you know, to issue additional equity. Yeah, we, yeah, I've talked about previously wanting to implement a dividend, because you should not look at equity as free. There's a cost to it, and paying a dividend is a way to recognise that cost, just like you would pay interest on debt. So I like the discipline of a dividend for that reason and respecting equity. I think it's good to have that in place, though. It's recommended by both ISS and Glass Lewis, both the governance firms to support all five resolutions, but including those three, because they are considered best practice to have them in place. But really, that's just there as a contingency, and really, you'd expect it to be there every time. We don't have plans to use it. Yeah, our focus right now is getting this, the feasibility study into the market. We think we've got fantastic growth with Havron. Having said that, you know, we do look at opportunities if one came along, but I don't think there's anything kind of imminent there that I would be flagging to the market, particularly inside the timeframe of the next AGM.
Great. Now, within that answer, which was very clear, Jonathan East's question has been answered. So there are three questions about the GM, and Jonathan East's one has just been taken care of, so well done. Thank you very much for that. Now, you yourself have received many, many questions, and we've received a fair number too. And out of our questions, 11, what about the share price? So this is, and they're pretty much of a muchness. Bruce Russell says, hi Sean, do you think the present share price reflects the true value of Greatland Gold?
Yeah, look, well, no, I don't, in a, to give a very direct and clear answer. In a more broad sense, look, I focus on what I can control. And I think that's, you know, the share price is fundamentally driven by market and sentiment, and all the things happening in the market that can influence that. I'd like to think what we've done over the last 12 months positions us to have a higher share price. Now, removing funding uncertainty, removing the uncertainty of the option, building the team, bringing in debt that should amplify returns to equity holders are all supportive of a higher share price. And I like to think that in a different market sentiment, that would be more fully reflected. But the market sentiment is not super strong right now. Yeah, if you do want to feel buoyed about owning Greatland stock, have a look at a Great British Pound gold price chart. It's the highest it's ever been. So there is some real positives there, and in an Australian dollar sense, it's also a very good price. The, but having said that, we think there is a huge opportunity to unlock the full value of Greatland, and I often talk about it in this three-year cycle. In 18 months' time, we'll be in production. I think that's a tremendous de-risking event, and should be reflected in a lower risk assessment, which means you should be able to attribute more values to the company. 18 months after that, we're at kind of that full production on that South East Crescent of 300,000 to 400,000 ounces per annum, unlocking really strong free cash flow. I would have thought that's another really significant de-risking event. Hopefully, in that same three-year period, you'd expect a pre-feasibility study, say, to come out, perhaps on an eastern Greshia kind of bulk mining or block cave option. And I think that would then show the full opportunity at Havron, and perhaps really take us to the next level of value. So I think there's a really beautiful growth and value proposition ahead of us. Do I think the market fully captures that now? No, but I think it's always a confluence of markets, sentiment, and the activity that the government takes. And if you have a look at our performance compared to our peers, the charts all look pretty similar. But I think we should be outperforming, one, because of all the de-risking activity we've done around funding, and two, we're also 20% copper. So that should give us greater diversification, and we should outperform gold only. Not sure we've really seen that. That's my job. That's why I've been going around talking to institutional investors for the last two weeks. And that's why today I'm meeting with a number of retail shareholders. I met some more retail shareholders this month. Yeah, I'm trying to leave no stone unturned to support the share price.
Okay, and it's probably worthwhile name checking a lot of these people, because they've been very nice in the way they ask the questions. But I'm sure that a bit, you know, it's not the nicest place to be when you're underwater on a share. So let's name check Keith Atherton, Tina Morris, Chris Thompson, Greg York, Lyndon Davies, Michael Odsley, John Carter, Neil Burns, Sharon Anderson, Steve Gilbert, and of those most intriguing, John Carter, he says, "I persuaded a friend of mine to buy in when the price was 38p. Do you think he'll ever make a profit?" Which is not the easiest of questions to answer, I don't think, but there you go. That's sort of, you get a flavour of all those questions that they've asked.
Yeah, look, I don't think it's appropriate for me to make share price predictions, but what I am happy to kind of say is kind of reaffirm what I just spoke to. I think over the next three years, there is a pathway to understand that there would be de-risking, the understanding of our future cash flows. I think investment theory tells you there is a return, a negative correlation between risk and return. The higher the risk, the, well, sorry, positive correlation, in that you'd expect a higher return at higher risk, so i.e. a share price should be low when you perceive it to have high risk. When it's perceived as low risk, the share price should be higher, because people should have more confidence in those future cash flows. So I think there is a pathway to showing a significant de-risking at Havron, and that should, investment theory would tell you, be supportive of an appreciation in the share price. And I think the magic of leverage and the quality of the team we have, I think should give people confidence in our ability to live with that, but also confidence that that should amplify equity returns.
Okay, let me ask you questions about the new board. And if I could summarise all the bits that are not included in the questions, that people are overwhelmingly positive that you've got a high-quality board. So be in no doubt about that, but nevertheless, people are drilling down and into the detail. And it's about the share options and, you know, how they're remunerated, and whether we're going to get, as shareholders, we're going to get value for money. So let me, Simon Berger asks, "The three new board members come to GGP with illustrious backgrounds and enviable track records. Truly, they are the masters of the Australian mining universe." So well done, Sean. "Can you give some greater clarity around what we can expect by way of value-added contributions from each of them?" And the wonderful Dip Sard, who asks brilliant questions, well done Dip. "Top-class pedigree," he says, "but how come we ensure that performance in Aduai will be measured rather than them enjoying a production rerate passively?" Because as you say, in 18 months, we go into production and the share price will kick on. So how do we guarantee that they will actually push the share price up for us, as well as it just simply happening organically?
Well, let me answer that in three parts, and thanks for the question. I think, you know, when you look at the calibre of this board that we've put together, it is exceptional. It truly is, and I think it, you know, it's reasonably, I think we stand out as an entity with having the quality of board that we do. And I think it also, one of the reasons I was able to attract such a quality board is because of the quality of asset that we have. When, you know, I really sat there with a blank piece of paper and thought who I would like to join the board. Mark Barnabar kind of was at the top of that list. I literally started conversations with Mark in September 2021. So it wasn't a quick process, but it was a really valuable one. And I think I would add, like, through that period, I've used Mark as a sounding board through a whole range of events that Greatland has gone through around the option process, the funding, engaging with institutional investors, and indeed Yaloo. So I think, you know, to some extent, having this calibre of people as a sounding board over the last 12 months has already been extremely valuable to me. And sorry, and I want to recognise the role that the existing board does, you know, as well in that regard. But yeah, I think Mark's strategic insight is exceptional. Similar with Elizabeth, her operational experience, together with kind of financial background, is, you know, an incredibly powerful combination. And then you've got Jimmy, who's come into our office a number of times, even before starting, has gone through the project with our technical teams and myself. He's heavily engaged in terms of, with the technical insights that he can provide, and it's a good discipline for us to go through them with Jimmy, who's also got an enormous amount of corporate experience. So really, I think what we've got is these beautiful skill sets, somewhat overlapping, but each bringing something different to the table to give us a very well-rounded complement of directors. And I think all of this goes to, it's not a guarantee of success, but I think it increases the probability of being successful and increasing the probability that we'll make the most of the opportunities that we have, both with the existing asset base, but also with opening opportunities for us in the future.
Okay, Sally Jones takes it in another direction. She says, "Can you confirm remuneration for the three new transformational appointees just announced?" And then the secondary question, "Can you confirm the current level of annual cost for salaries and administration, your G and A costs?"
Well, yeah, there's probably more to add in terms of, you know, just to round out. I think the doors that they open for us having a board of that quality in terms of being able to pursue extra opportunities, I think should not be lost on people. I think also in terms of the ability to attract capital. And I think even when us being able to close the bank, debt, being able to attract the high quality of institutions that we did, the Yaloo, perhaps those directors have already contributed hugely to our success, because the funding package was critical. And be under no doubt, it was all announced at one point in time, and all three of those supported each other. So I think the value of that board, I think, is already demonstrated, but I think it goes on. Into, you know, their main form of remuneration is the options. Look, I think that's great alignment. They need to increase the share price, or more than 45% from today's price, but up 45%. I think we're all doing well if that is achieved. Yes, you can talk about, how do we know that individual has contributed to the team outcome? But I think, to some extent, the team works well if it's well-led. The team works well if it has the right strategic capability. I think there's no question about the calibre of those people. And for me, to be able to work with those people, to be able to have a sounding board, to be able to generate our strategy together, I think it's undoubtable that our organisational capacity has been enhanced, which should lead to better outcomes. In terms of our G and A costs, it's relatively modest. I've built the team, make no apology about that. We could have not have gone through that option process. We could have not have prevailed in that option process unless we had all the component parts, that we understood the geology, the resource geology, the mining engineering, the processing, the legal ramifications, that we had the finance team to bring in the debt. Mines are not free. To create a 35-year cash flow generating platform, we need the team that can amplify that. I think our G and A costs have been very modest. They continue to be modest. I think really what we're trying to do is first and foremost, make sure we're fully funded for Havron, and then we can think about, you know, what other augmentation we need. But I think we have a small, high-quality team, and I think that will continue to be our focus.
So good value for money, you think?
I think exceptional, and I think to achieve what we've done this year, and, you know, to some extent, I get to be up the front of that team. But, yeah, again, make no mistake, I can't do that without a really strong technical team supporting me. I can't do it without really strong strategic advice, without good legal advice, without good commercial. You know, Chris Turner, CFO, you know, took a huge amount of the weight running the financing process. I enjoy running those processes, but that option process was pretty consuming, as was finding equity, as was, you know, engaging with, you know, finding the best calibre new directors that we could. So, yeah, it's, it takes, you know, it takes the full team to be successful. And I think, you know, I've spoken about this before. My greatest achievement was probably in 2021, setting the foundation, putting in place a team that could give us the opportunity to be successful.
Okay, fantastic. There is a question from somebody, and I can't quite find it in the timeframe, who says, well, where are the gaps? You've got a fantastic team. Are there any gaps there that you would still like to plug and to fill? And apologies for not being able to name check them.
Yeah, no, well, thanks for the question nonetheless. The, I think, I think there are a couple of positions, I think, around investor relations and kind of business development. That is something that hasn't been absolutely core to us. I've, you know, probably handled a lot of that myself in the last 18 months. But I think, you know, we want a strong share price. We want all these things. And I think having someone who's more focused on that and can be available to engage and think about how we present our narrative to the market and how we prepare internal data and how we communicate that and how we analyse our own business, I think is something. So I think another couple of really high-quality people around that aspect would probably round out our team in the present asset base. So it's again, a small number of high-quality people. We talked about the board before, and I want to link this back. We are more of a destination than we were a month ago. I think, I think we have a good culture which attracts people. I think we have a good asset that attracts people. But having some really, you know, exceptional, high-calibre people on our board with big brands in Australian mining, but just in Australian corporate sphere or space, does attract high-quality talent that want exposure to those people and the opportunities to come with it. So I think a couple of people, we're not going to have a, you know, be building, you know, a massive army of people, but a couple of more, I think, would round out and perhaps put me on a more sustainable footprint, which would be nice too.
Okay. There was the big blocks of questions dealt with. Onto some interesting, undoubtedly interesting, but slightly more random questions from here on in. A straightforward one to start with, Mickey asks, "When's the earliest production could start at Havron?"
Well, wouldn't be an interview with you, Donald, without us getting into some left-field questions, but it's great that you worked through all the questions that we've had. I think in terms of, you know, first production, our guidance is towards that early 2024. I think when you look at the run rate and the acceleration of the decline, you know, I think that's very achievable. So I feel really good about that. Look, I wouldn't want to kind of suggest that it's going to be any earlier than that, but I think we should have some increased confidence around that. Look, we can always take a more conservative view on it, but right now, I think the accelerating metres that you're doing, if you look at the last quarter of productivity, you just see that it's working well, and we've seen that the pace has moved to full blast, which again is all part of the accelerated and more efficient and productive development.
Okay, which takes us to Richard Spence, and he says, "When the decline reaches the ore body, development will immediately begin in the ore body, cutting out the slostopes, producing development ore, possibly in the second half of 2023." And he makes, you know, interesting point. "Is it reasonable to expect development golden H2 2023 resulting in significant revenue from sales? You are the man who knows."
So it's a good question by Richard, and you often do see that flow through. Like, my own view on this is we have an existing mill which is currently being fed at Telfer Three Itzor. I think if you are a single deposit new mill, you're looking for some development and commissioning, or you often put that development ore through. It's really inefficient and expensive to do that, because you're only running the mill at a fraction of what you would normally do, but you're partly using it for commissioning of a new mill. In this case, we have a mill that's been established for 35 years. I would think it's more likely that you'd stockpile that. We're not going to be using the full capacity of that mill. We have surge capacity, so to speak. So I would have thought it's more likely that you would stockpile and build up till you've got a more economical quantity of ore to put through, which I think would be more likely to be associated with those first stopes in Q4 2024. So although you would have the potential to do that, I don't think we'd actually optimise the cash flow from Havron in the first 12 months by doing that approach. So I think I'm kind of saying to Richard, I think you should more think about it, starting with, once we begin stoping, albeit having a bit of a wrong stockpile of development ore is a positive thing.
Okay, good answer. Mike Harbour, here we go. Here's your question. "Great work in the Finance Society, say, so people are not all mourned and grown. Some of them are very happy. In view of the current share price, investors need a bit of a boost. Do you plan to prepare an updated MRE before the feasibility study is published by Newcrest?" I mean, you use that as a as a device. Once, will you do it twice?
Thanks, Mike, for for both elements to the question. So thank you around the debt. I think it is outstanding. In terms of the M R E, just to my mind, we didn't put out an M R E or updated resource just before the P F S. We did it afterwards to show this is a good P F S, albeit it showed what Havron was like ten months earlier. And it only showed part of Havron. And I think we hopefully communicated that message well. I think we'd be unlikely to put out an M R E, you know, to front run the definitive feasibility study. But again, we'd like to see an update of that M R E as part of the Newcrest universe of resource updates in in February next year. And that would be my expectation. And we kind of know the cutoff of the of the feasibility study because in August, Newcrest released its updated resource and reserve. It was within one percent of the numbers we released as Greatland independently on the third of March twenty twenty two. The cutoff for Newcrest was November twenty twenty one. So it's quite possible that the feasibility study will be a look back in time twelve months.
How does that make you feel?
Sorry, how does that make me feel?
How does that make you feel?
Like Tom Baker. But the, but the, so I think we kind of know what it will look like. But that's great because we've got twelve months of drilling since that. And we can just see ongoing growth. And I think we should celebrate that ongoing growth.
So will you do an updated M R E after the definitive feasibility study comes out?
Well, I I think we'd like to see the joint venture do one in February with the the other, as is the practice of Newcrest, to update all its assets typically in that February. And that is always our our preference. We, you know, we go on. We value the relationship with Newcrest. We we go on well together, especially at that technical team level. You know, I got to see Sandeep briefly in Denver. Yeah, our preference is to do things together. Like, if we need to, we've shown a proven capacity to come out with our own updates on the resource reserves, to do our own version of a of a feasibility study, which ultimately an independent expert believed was a very credible and more representative view of Havron. And that's a great testament to the team. So we have that capacity. And it's great that shareholders have that confidence. But fundamentally, our preference is to do everything as a joint venture with Newcrest.
Right. Ruby is a happy camper. She's thrilled to see how you face attack, face and tackle challenges thrown your way, like creating a funding plan when needed after Newcrest declined to five percent, adding substantial heavyweights to our board to create future value, producing your own M R E when one wasn't forthcoming. My question is, her question is, given your desire, it seems to go mining. What else do we need to add to our repertoire in order to be equipped to to do so confidently? Ruby, you write very nicely. And if the unthinkable happens and Newcrest decided not to mine Havron, then what's your backup plan to overcome this? And how and where would we process our ore?
So there's a little bit to unpack there. Look, I I think we kind of have a team that can work through that, you know, we 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 have, we'd have to scale up potentially. But also with the augmentation of Jimmy in that executive role, just to remind people, Jimmy spent twenty five, thirty five years at B H P, ran a number of divisions, not just the super prestigious iron ore, but I think ran kind of nickel and and other divisions there. So he's got just a huge range of mining experience. You're widely seen as to Y C and, you know, head of ops at B H P. So having his expertise, his contact database of people in the industry, which is like an encyclopedia of everyone who, you know, does mining, not just in Australia, but around the world. And then his ability to bring those people into our organisation gives us a competitive advantage. I think I have a magnificent rolodex of mining kind of around Northern Star and other entities. But, you know, credit where credit's due, you know, Jimmy is next level. B H P is the largest mining company in the world. So I I think the ability to scale is is really there. The ability, though, of a relatively small number of senior experience and really capable people to make judgments and assessments around mining opportunities are really good. In in terms of alternatives to to process our ore, look, I I don't really think that's something we we have to, you know, focus on too much, but there.
Are there other options?
Yeah, look, there's there's Nifty further to the west. There's a number of modular plants when you're only trying to put through, say, a million tonnes. You know, modular parts are are quite capable. But, you know, there's Antifa wants to build something. So there's there's a number of ranges. But fundamentally, I I think, you know, we we we, you know, it would make sense. I I don't think Newcrest would want to hold Telfer without Havron. You know, they they tried to sell it twice. It's scheduled to close in twenty twenty four. It it wouldn't be something, I I, you know, I doubt Newcrest would have Australia where they'd want to retain an asset and rehab, you know, a a site, but not have a world class ore body next door.
Okay, which links us neatly into Anya. And she says, with Newcrest downplaying Havron, not exercising their option for the further five percent and Greatland now being supported by Wailoo, are Greatland stroke Wailoo seeking to issue an offer to Newcrest for Telfer?
So I I think one of the benefits of what we've done over the last month, that I I say over the last month when we announced it, this was a twelve month process. The, you know, we make ourselves a very credible organisation to look at opportunities for growth. In terms of the caliber of the team, in terms of the access to to debt with tier one banks and equity support. And I think having all those elements make us a very credible organisation in a market where perhaps capital was more scarcely available to to resource companies than it was two years ago. So I think it puts us in incredibly strong position for whatever opportunities arise.
Great. Now, we've got lots of questions still to get through. So if you could perhaps condense your answers as we go forward, that'd be very helpful. Mark Hennessy says, I'm putting the cart before the horse here, but if the future is kind enough to us and there was a commercial scale discovery at Ernest Giles, what's the situation regarding local infrastructure, logistics, et cetera? And the wonderful Dip Sard, who has asked some really fantastic questions, he says something similar. Can you detail exploration timelines at Ernest Giles? And if determined is a viable project, what about the options and the timeframes for development, taking into account infrastructure and capital requirements? So two detailed questions about Ernest Giles for you to answer.
Well, it's difficult when you ask me to accelerate mine because there's a a a lot you could be said there. But look, firstly, Ernst Giles is a fantastic exploration opportunity and option value in our portfolio. Yeah, I'm unapologetically do really like it. Would like to be on it next year. It's really important that we're respectful to the indigenous engagement and we need to work with them to achieve that. Would like to. I I think there's a a really good prospect that we will. But we do need to do that as a as a gateway. I think once you're drilling these things, it is a reasonably remote site east of Kalgoorlie. But plenty of sites have been, you know, developed in those kind of regions. It's, I can't think of any infrastructure, but, you know, another kind of existing gold mill near it that we would just kind of piggyback on the back of. But what we now have is a bigger balance sheet, better access to capital. I would expect we'd have free cash flow coming from Havron, which would potentially help fund the development of a Ernst Giles kind of asset. So I think there would be a range of ways for us to deliver it. I hope it would be so big that it would be a decade before we develop it. Yeah, if it's smaller, you can normally punch in a little bit quicker and develop it quickly, quickly. I hope that's not the case. I hope it's another Havron and it's a it's a really substantial development over years and years. But so I think without knowing the ore body, it's difficult to necessarily comment on development timeframes. But I think we're, again, I I think what I would say is it's unlikely I would go out and joint venture that with someone else. If we were on to a world class ore body, this time selfishly, we keep it for all our shareholders and optimize our value and exposure to that asset.
Okay, David Ellis asks you about Scallywag. Can you please advise when we'll be getting drilled results from our hundred percent owned Scallywag area? As it's been a long time since we've had any news from this area.
We are drilling there now. We did the R C pre collars. We have a diamond rig drilling as we speak. I wouldn't really want to comment on assay times right now. I have heard anecdotally they're coming down, like materially down. But one swallow does not a summer make. So I think I'd like to see that consistently before I start talking about an expectation that assay times have come down. We typically like to to bring them out kind of as as we get them. We don't, you know, hold them back till. You know, so I would like to think that there's a relatively short period before we have some, but we we don't have any assays back. You know, we have to get the core back, cut it, get it into the assays, return the assays, analyse them and then announce them. But I'd like to think that's in a, you know, certainly this calendar year. You'd start to see the flow of results. But again, our exploration campaign in Scallyway over the last, well, over the last five years, has been very measured. We really needed to be fully funded on Havron. Now perhaps we are that. We can accelerate that into twenty twenty three. But right now, it's still just like the last five years, it's a single rig. So, you know, that's going along. This year, unlike last year where we just ran a diamond rig, this year, I think we've done it a little bit smarter. We've done the R C pre collars. That's cheaper, quicker to get in that. And then we've got the diamond drill rig coming in and punching back through all those collars. So the more expensive diamond rig is just drilling core. So although that means we get the results later in the year, it should mean that it accelerates through that programme quite smartly now it's underway.
Okay, you learn as you go. That is just the nature of life, isn't it, Sean? Barbara Wilson, at the last town hall in July, you mentioned there were two fantastic deals you're busy working on. There have been a few announcements that have released via R and S in the intervening months. Have both of these deals that you spoke of before been formally announced in the market? Or are both or one still items in the fire?
I I think what I've probably tried to emphasise over the last twelve months is probably around the debt piece, new directors and getting, you know, strategic equity support. So that is all announced. We, you know, we do have other, you know, conversations with people. You know, we we really like to look at opportunities to expand our our footprint in that Patterson region where I think we have a good understanding of the of the geology. We have a really good team that's been put together to kind of look through cover. So I think I can articulate a competitive advantage in that region. So we'd like to look at opportunities to expand that now. You know, there's there's opportunities to to do that. But like everything, you know, you do have to find the the right partner who sees value in your contribution as well. So we continue to look at those things. Nothing imminent. But I I think probably what I've referred to in in the past is announced. But, you know, we like to keep ourselves active. So you should think that we're thinking through those kind of options and who we can talk to.
Okay, Mike Donahue talks about 2D representations of the ore body. He says they're hard to understand. He prefers to see a 3D representation. Is there any way that with your software, your 3D software, you can actually make that accessible to people like him?
Great. I can answer that one quickly for you, Donald. Yes, we announced it this morning. It's on our website today. And I also part of the town hall presentation was a walkthrough of it. So yes, that's done. We'd had a couple of people ask for that. Great idea, good question. Something that our technical team launched into and got done for us all. And, you know, I've enjoyed going through it as well. I think it's a it's a big ore body, hard to understand. The 3D fly through really helps.
Great. So well done, Mike Donahue. Good question. Dip Sard, the man who has, we we could almost have Q and A with Dip Sard's questions alone. He's he's got twenty minutes of answers. So we have to only ask the, only ask the, you know, the very finest of his questions. Sean, can you please articulate your case for a potential investor sitting on the fence that G G P will be able to transition from explorer to a company that can develop and operate their own mines?
Yeah, look, I I I think we've done that quite well in terms of, I think we've got an incredible organisational capacity around that expanded board. We have a technical team that I think is is proven and and battle hardened over the last twelve months. And also that technical team contributes hugely towards the banking success. It contributes hugely towards the successfully engaging in the equity markets. Because just like sessions today, those people ask questions, technical questions, and being able to answer them and give them confidence about the quality of those answers. Newcrest coming out with its own resource and reserve and it being within one percent of our third of March you know, resource and reserve update, which was our banking case. And then having that confirmed by Newcrest enhanced our reputation with people as high caliber and our credibility. So all of these things, the the strength of the team, I I think, has has been tremendous. And and again, I I I'm very happy to keep talking about the investment we made in twenty twenty one into high caliber people has paid off in spades. So I I think having that organisational capacity around the board leadership, around the the executive and the management team, I think that's how you optimize the value of your asset. At Havron, I think we've, you know, through the option process, through the funding, we've demonstrated an ability to do that. I think we also have the ability to do that with with other assets, both understanding opportunities, which is important, but also being able to apply ourselves to be successful at mining. Now, in certain cases, you might be taking over teams. In other cases, you might be augmenting them. In other cases, you you might be building them. But I think having that leadership and the capacity to do that, I think then you can populate out that pyramid and that organisational capacity. So yes, I think we're really well placed to do that. And access to capital should not be underestimated. And when you see a difficult market such as we're in now, access to capital is king.
That's a good answer. Okay, my final Dip Sard question. He he makes more of a statement, so I'm going to turn it into a into a question. He nods to the fact that you've got an E S X listing, the Wailoo partnership, the board additions. He says you're building up for something big here. Do you intend to adopt an aggressive, inorganic, inorganic growth strategy focused on all accelerated growth?
Look, I'd never choose to describe my inorganic or business development or growth outside of Havron as aggressive. I think I'd rather characterize it as financially disciplined. I think one of the reasons we should be looking at it now, because we've got all the time in the world right now. We have the next three years just of growth at Havron. Beyond that, we have the bulk mine, which probably gives us another kind of, say, three years of growth. The right time to look at growth opportunities is when you don't need to do them. If if you've just sold your house and you're about to settle it in two weeks' time and you need to find a right the next place in two weeks, you're going to go out and buy the first thing you see. If you've got six years to pick the eyes out of the market, you can make financially disciplined good decisions. So I would describe it's aggressive so far as it starts now. But the beauty of it is we're not in a hurry. The market will potentially come to us in any case, but we have the team. The market will potentially come to us in any case, but we have the team. We have the network to see good opportunities. And we have the luxury of time to be financially disciplined in how we assess them. So yes, I'd love to do it. My track record is with three businesses going from single asset to multi-asset, multi-billion dollar platforms. I'd love to achieve that with Greatland. I'd like to achieve that with Greatland. But in all those cases, we created shareholder value. We returned a multiple of invested equity capital to shareholders because we're financially disciplined around that and we had good teams to do it. I like to think I was a part and an important part of all those three teams. But I was part of a bigger team. And that's like what I like to think we've achieved here at Havron as well. The team that can go out and try to replicate the same success.
Okay, George Zoros asks, or he has a question regarding the number of shares on offer. Um, and he's worried about share dilution amongst other things. Is there further dilution on the way before production? And or will consolidation need to be considered as we prepare to list on the ASX? So he's worried about dilution. Will there need to be consolidation before we list on the ASX?
So let me answer that in in three parts. Like, yeah, I I'm a shareholder. I I don't want dilution of our 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 stock. And and firstly, let me say we are, we believe we're funded. So there there is no need to, and I and I'm going to take it back to the second question about resolutions three, four and five. No, they're not needed. They're good practice to have in order. Um, but the, so we're not looking to go and raise additional equity. But just remind people, you know, we had four billion shares on issue uh, you know, eighteen months ago when I joined. It took BHP a hundred years to get four billion shares on issue. So there was always, always a lot of shares on issue. You know, fully diluted, that might be twenty percent higher now. But through that twenty percent, when I joined, we had four million Aussie in the bank. We've now raised on a fully diluted basis, well, on a fully diluted basis, we've raised about four hundred and fifty million and funded their asset. So I think the dilution we've incurred over the last couple of months has been smart dilution. And I I haven't heard of a mine being developed without money. You 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 need to pay people to to develop mines. Um, you have workforces, you have contractors, you have equipment. So since Roman times, you've needed money to, and probably before, you've needed money to develop a mine. So, so I know some people have sent me messages going, why did you raise money? Well, we had to. That was the deal we entered. The joint venture was not a free carry. We had to pay our own money and we've done that. So I I think the dilution we've done has been extremely wise and necessary. And we've got something for it. The, in terms of ASX, um, look, there's a number of different ways to do it. But again, if it's compliance listing, we wouldn't raise any any equity. We'll assess that. There's there's, you know, more than one way to skin a cat, if I'm allowed to say that. But we can.
You've already picked the eyes out of the market, so why not?
Yes, so, and then in terms of a share consolidation. Look, I don't love that we've got four billion plus shares on issue. I'd probably love to do a consolidation at some point, but I'd probably rather consolidate into strength. Um, so yes, we'd look at that. It's something I think about. But it's not a burning platform for us again. It's something that we can look at and at the right time, it's probably good to to reassess. Um, so we'll we'll continue to monitor that. But I think if you, I think about shares in a percentage way at Greatland, because the numbers are big. Um, and and I think, you know, sometimes people see a number of shares being issued and probably think it's a large number. But most companies you probably say have four hundred million shares on issue, not four billion. So when you divide, when you take a zero off, when you divide it by ten, it puts the numbers in a little bit more context. Um, so yeah, a share consolidation is probably a good idea. But I think we get, we have the strategic initiative as to when we think about implementing something like that.
Peter Tallon is an Irishman who wants you to come to Ireland, basically. And he's not bothered whether it's Belfast or Dublin, he just wants you to come to Ireland. He called himself a leprechaun. I'm not going to go there, believe me. Even as a Scotsman, I'm not going there. Um, and he says there's lots of people with sitting on gold in GGP shares and he wants to see you. And if the opportunity arises that we made an offer for Havron or even GGP as a whole, oh, this is a tricky question, I do apologise. So fun, he wants to see you. But on the other hand, he wants to know if you're going to, if forty p a share would be an insult um, for for GGP. He wonders if anybody made an offer at forty p, would you accept?
Okay, so delighted to come to Ireland. Um, so if um, if there's a share base there that's to get across to, um, you know, that that might be a sensible thing to do on my next trip, but don't, don't, um, don't don't bake that in, but um, but that's something I can look into. Um, so thank you. The, uh, in terms of forty pence, I'm I'm, you know, with the risk of getting the maths wrong, that sounds like four hundred and fifty percent premium. Um, I think that would be, that's, I I think I might answer that in two ways. So so firstly, my ambition with this platform is not to be taken over. We, world-class assets do not grow on trees. We have one. We should take pride in that. We should nurture it. We should enjoy it. We want to take the full value of it. Um, and people who, you know, offer you bids obviously think they're going to make more money than what they're paying. Having said that, um, you know, I think what's important and the way I think about it, it's it's about delivering value for shareholders. It's about enhancing reputations. If, you know, if there was a strong enough bid, you you probably would put it to shareholders. Um, but I think that's not what I want to achieve. Um, but my belief is the best way to create short-term value, be it in the share price, be it in the in the manifestation of an attractive takeover bid, is to create medium to long-term value. And the short-term price over time will take care of itself. And I think there remains asymmetrical risk in our share price. At some point, if we're not successful at demonstrating the value of of Havron, you you know, a predator will come and take us over. Um, again, that's not what I want to achieve, but this is a world-class all body. And although I think perhaps we're slightly less susceptible to an opportunistic bid, to a bid that manifestly underestimates the value, we are still susceptible to a bid. And so it's a bit of a head-scratcher for me, the current share price, but I I do view it in context of the overall market. And I think if you look at Newcrest, for instance, and and, you know, Newcrest is a great company, um, a global major, Australia's leading gold company and a relationship I really value. And I think they do a lot of things very well, but they're at an eight-year low. Um, their share price have gone from twenty-nine to, I think, fifteen dollars. Um, so, you know, I like to think Greatland can swim against that tide. That Greatland can demonstrate that it should be performing better than its peer group because we're growing, because we have a world-class asset, because we have copper exposure. I I don't think I've really seen that outperformance yet. We're fully funded. Um, but I like to, that's why I take the time to engage with shareholders. That's why I take the time to meet new shareholders. You know, we want the word out. You know, Greatland, I think, has a high profile in London, but has been a bit of a secret globally prior to this. The number of institutional funds I meet in Australia and USA, not so much now, but had never heard of Greatland was phenomenal. Now, I think we fixed that profile. And fundamentally, when those insos see value, they can move. So I I like where it's headed.
Okay, second last question. Abba Mohammed, why is gold not outperforming as the global economy struggles?
Well, it's it's interesting. I I think I can argue it has outperformed. Um, it's gone down. And I think it is highly correlated with the strengths of the US dollar. And the US dollar has been probably the the strongest um, asset. You know, on the planet, and I'm I'm sure there's some other things that are better. But the, if you have a look at the deterioration in gold price vis-à-vis equity markets, gold has actually performed well. Hasn't doubled, hasn't knocked the lights out. But in a falling market, falling less is outperforming. In, I think I mentioned at the start of the 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 session, in G, in Great British Pound price, I think we're at an all-time high gold price. In Aussie gold price, it's not an all-time high, but it's pretty darn good. So gold has outperformed, had gold equities outperformed, maybe not, but gold price has. Um, so now could it more outperform? I I think it could. Um, and I think there are some fundamentals, but I think the world's still trying to understand whether there is real inflation. I inflation that is greater than interest rates, and we all appreciate interest rates have gone up, or whether there's just inflation. Now, gold is an excellent hedge against inflation, less against real and increasing real interest rates. So there's a little bit of a battle going on. You know, the Fed, the Bank of England, the RBA, you know, are all in this little bit of a war with each other, kind of increasing rates or at least against inflation, I mean. Um, so I think that's yet to play out. And I think the market loves to have a direction and not uncertainty. So whilst that's playing out, I think gold is in a little bit of a wait and see.
Hmm, state of flags.
Yeah.
Okay, last question from Simon James.
And sorry, and we have twenty percent copper.
You've got twenty percent copper. Um, why should I invest in Greatland today? I've I've kept the investment summary until last. Why should I invest in Greatland today instead of waiting until respective definitive feasibility studies and the decision to mine results? Give me a reason. He's got cash, he says, wants to invest. Why should he invest in you now?
Well, well, we're we're less than, I'd like to think we're less than three months away. The the December quarter starts, um, yeah, yeah, starts next week. Um, and the the DFS, the definitive feasibility study is due out in that December twenty-two quarter, so we're not far away. Um, look, I think, well, to be frank, I think the pullback in price gives you an opportunity to enter, which I I'd like to think won't forever be there. But I think what you should see is a fifty percent increase in the production profile of Havron with this feasibility study. You'll see a longer mine life based on a larger reserve base. Now, typically, from a PFS to a feasibility study, there's not a lot of change. It's just a reiteration of the same report. Because you've already drilled it out, you're already kind of committed to what you're doing. You're just sharpening up your numbers. You're going from kind of plus or minus twenty-five percent to plus or minus ten, fifteen percent. In this case, we're actually going to be fifty percent bigger on plus a bigger reserve base. So I I think there's really positive growth there. Um, and we're twelve months closer to production, because normally you haven't started production. You haven't started your development. You haven't started your decline. This passage of time, we used to be three years away from production. Now we're kind of eighteen months away from production. So the passage of time from an MPV perspective is a lot shorter. So I I think all these things give you an indication that the feasibility study, now it might have a drill cutoff of November twenty twenty-one. And we know there's a heck of a lot of good drill results since then that gives you exposure to even more growth. But it should be enhanced. It should look better. And remember, Newcrest, together with its, um, the loan to Greatland and its hundred and eighty million dollar commitment in September twenty twenty-one to the growth of Telfer, has put in something like four hundred and fifty million US. So even for a company like Newcrest, you know, a half-billion-dollar commitment pre-feasibility study says something about their conviction. And I don't know the mind of Newcrest, but I do know the mind of Greatland. And we certainly have conviction that we have a world-class asset.
Sean Day, I've run out of time. I'm just very, very grateful on behalf of all the investors. I'd just like to say, thank you. You always spent such a long time going through every one of these questions in detail. We couldn't be more grateful. Thank you so much. I thank you for your time. Thank you to Core London for staying on late and looking after us, for which we are deeply, deeply grateful. To the fantastic team at Grace Church PR here who've looked after us and to London South East as a platform, who always delight in having you on. Keep keep using the the GGP chat board. We love having you. Thank you so much to everyone. Bye-bye.